I call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Counselor Jelly?
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here.
Announcements? Do any counselors have announcements this evening?
No.
I'd just like to say Summer Fest is vastly approaching and Joe's working hard on it. Thank you. Communications, Mr. Mulder?
Uh, we'll have one listed there. It's the independent audit report with a body worn camera. It's something required by law that the audit report will give to the city council.
Thank you. And under Presentations, there's nothing listed, but you had a couple of short things that you mentioned at pre-agenda. If you could summarize those for us.
Yeah, the one was on the Highway fifty-three business parcel, what's called the Hawkline Business Project, uh, Hawkline Business Park. Um, we are looking at potentially applying for the deed grant for some infrastructure and we've had some inquiries about possible development at that center. The second one was just, um, kind of a, an overview of the type of housing and the difference between duplexes and, um, twin homes. And, um, and just how we talk about that until we all, um, it can be kind of confusing. So just, you know.
Thank you. Um, right now is the time for public discussion. I know we have one person with us this evening that would like to speak to us. Um, if you could approach the podium and start with your name and address.
It's already on? Is it on? I think it is.
Are we on?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay. Representative Natalie Zalesnikar, and I just wanted to kind of do a brief update. I'm on the Aging Task Force and the Emergency Medical Service Task Force, uh, for the state, uh, for the governor's appointed, uh, committee. So we're meeting continually. So I was just listening to your department, uh, updates and I think the non-emergency transportation is going to be a big issue as the initiative is to keep everyone aging at home in greater Minnesota, well, for the entire state. And so with that being said, seventy percent of the ambulance runs statewide are non-emergency calls. So as you're doing your strategic planning and, and the grant writing, I think that's going to be, and really a critical thing for Herman Town and all the cities and townships to be looking at innovative ways. Um, AEOA, uh, got half a million dollars for their agency there, which I'm hoping that they'll be able to possibly use some for non-emergency transportation and senior services. But coming out of that pandemic, we recognize the forty percent increase of mental health. And so isolation is a really, uh, big piece regardless that there's a pandemic for people that are homebound. And so if you don't have transportation, it's a game changer for people to stay connected and community. So I'm looking at innovative ways. When you're talking about the assisted living, like the Pillars and Edgewood and Herman Town, they all have vans and buses. And, and when I ran facilities, the, the issue to use it to help other people in the community was always insurance and liability issues. But I think we're going to have to cross some barriers with insurance and liability to figure out ways to be innovative. So we don't have, you know, hundreds of thousands of vehicles, dollars of vehicles sitting in parking lots where we coordinate transportation, drivers, pickups, deliveries to get people out and about moving and cross-utilize spaces. So you see that happening, like Island again, they're doing crafts and meetings, Pequam's holding events for it, nothing to do with just meals and, and drinks. It's, it's community engagement in whatever building structure exists. So I'm looking at innovative ways. And so if you have anything like that, you know, please let me know because when we go back to session, then working on workforce grants or initiatives is what I will be doing. So the emergency disaster relief went through. And so, uh, although we don't have a lot in this area right here, there has been significant damage to people on the outskirts of Herman Town. So, um, I'm working on, uh, things that will work together, you know, with bipartisanshipally to try to get some things done. So. But basically that's it. Just getting through, uh, the things that are happening day to day. And if you have questions, we'll have a lot of issues when we go back to session. A childcare is a continually big issue. You know, we've lost fifty percent of the, the family childcare for Herman Town, Proctor, Two Harbors, and then we haven't grown with centers. So families are struggling. And when you have growing communities like Herman Town, if you don't have childcare, it's hard to take a job. And then you lose more people in, in the workforce too. So for those that want to work or need to work, we want to have an infrastructure. So I've been looking at the mandates. They have a lot of proposed mandates that the providers are up in arms about for both centers and families because it, it just straddles them. Even with more mandates, it's going to increase the cost to families, which is already a significant portion of their paycheck. So I'll be working on childcare initiatives that can lower those costs and increase providers. So people have choice to find the best. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, if that's all right?
Oh, yeah.
Um, do you find like private places like the Pillars and Edgewood, are they willing to transport people that don't live in their facilities if it wasn't for the insurance?
I can't answer that, but I can speak, just having been a nursing home administrator and an executive director in operating facilities like that. I tried to do that years back, uh, to try to provide opportunities for the community to go pick up people. To, when you look at activities, you're, you have a structured place where you're having, whether it's coffee time, exercise, wellness checks for blood pressure, diabetic, diabetic screening, fall precautions, or even bingo and more social things. But whatever you're doing in a location, in theory could be welcomed for the public to come in, similar to the city hall or a church. And so in my mind, I'm trying to look at partnerships and I've spent time with the Pillars and at Edgewood, but those are big settings. And Herman Town's a large population now. And so we have the YMCA, which is great, but, but getting people to the places is the issue. So if you can't drive, what's the backup plan? And we're having an issue getting volunteer drivers through the nonprofit agencies or through the churches because the mileage reimbursement is so low. So I know that, uh, stop Congressman Staber's been working on that to try to get that mileage reimbursement rate higher because the gas prices are higher. So people just can't afford to just, they want to, but it's a lot of, there's a lot of windshield time in greater Minnesota to get from point A to the doctor and back. And, and people that are retired want to volunteer, but they just can't take that much money out of their gas, uh, budget. So we're working on initiatives.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
And continuing public discussion, is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. You don't, this is public discussion, so this is a great time to do that.
All right. So I'm Mark Munger. Uh, I am actually running for Representative Zalesnikar's seat. And, uh, I am here to, uh, basically introduce myself, not talk politics, just give you a basic thumbnail sketch of who I am. I was a district court judge for twenty-three years, twenty active, um, three years as a, uh, senior judge. Prior to that, I was the Proctor City Attorney for fourteen years. I was in private practice for eighteen years. Uh, I have lived my whole life, uh, as an adult, basically my career out in Friedenburg Township. My kids have all been, uh, Herman Town students, gone through Herman Town High School, all done well. My wife was on the Herman Town School Board for fifteen years. My son Matt now serves on the Herman Town School Board as well. And, um, I'm in this for one reason. I've looked at the landscape. I've looked at Saint Paul. I've looked at what's going on. And I don't like the tone. I don't like the lack of civility. And I think I, as a district court judge, as a lawyer, as a trained mediator, can bring some skills to the table that are lacking in our legislature. And so for those reasons, I threw my hat in the ring back in February and I did it here. I announced it here at the Wellness Center. Why? Because those public-private partnerships are something that are dear to my heart. I've watched the city of Herman Town. My wife was on the school board with Dan Irshen when they were touring around Minnesota, looking for facilities to model, um, the Wellness Center after. It didn't happen. The tax base, uh, and the, uh, incentives to get it done didn't happen. But eventually, through the community here, with a lot of volunteer effort, um, and Essentia and the Y and the city and all of the entities that came together to make that facility, it's a great facility. I use it. I know lots of folks in this room use it. Um, and that's the kind of thing I want to do down in Saint Paul. Um, and so that's why I'm running. Um, I'm doing these little meet and greets to basically tell you who I am. You can always find out more at Munger four. It's the numeral four, M N, um, dot com. And you can always email at campaign at that same email, um, address, Munger four M N dot com. I'm willing to have dialogue with anyone about any issue. I know most of you, uh, I know, uh, I've had a chance to sit down with Chief Kreis and I'm making it a point, um, to sit down with all the law enforcement chiefs from Proctor, Herman Town, uh, Two Harbors, uh, the Saint Louis County Sheriff, that's what I'm doing tomorrow with, uh, Gordon Ramsey, and also Lake County Sheriff, because this district is huge. It's a big area and I want to find out from law enforcement, what are their issues? Um, I said this before, I think had I been at the table down in Saint Paul, I know my, my colleague who just spoke disagrees with this, but I think if I would have been at the table talking about liaison officers, and I know the mayor was a liaison officer, um, I think I could have brought some more common sense to that debate and discussion from my side of the aisle. And I think that was lacking. And so that's why I want to be there, to be that person. So thank you for your time. I look forward to working with you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public discussion this evening? Does anyone wish to address the council? Mr. Wicklund, anybody online? Uh, appears no one else in chambers. We will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, approval or correction of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four city council continuation minutes and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from June fifteenth through. I lost my place. June thirtieth. Oh, yeah. In the amount of eight hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. All in, uh, roll call, since we're spending money.
Counselor Jones?
Hi.
Counselor Geisler?
Hi.
Counselor Jelly?
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Hi.
Mayor Boucher?
Hi.
Next, we have no ordinances, resolutions, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one zero seven, resolution approving implementation plan for placing certain management employees on the newly adopted twenty twenty-four compensation plan. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
On the resolution, I made a error, was break down step four to be stepped by, um, just to clarify the best case. Um, this is the last of, uh, the employees, um, that we put on the compensation plan, um, that was adopted earlier this year.
That, that error was for the fire inspector's position?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Do we need to amend the resolution to accurately reflect that?
I will do that. Yes.
Sorry.
Vote on that. So do we need to amend?
Do we need to amend it?
I'll amend it when, once it's certified.
You, you want to?
Do you want the motion to amend it?
You should have all said.
Yes.
And Counselor Jelly, would you amend the motion to include that correction for the fire inspector?
Yes, I would.
And Counselor Geisler, would you amend your second?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I think I made my position fairly clear last meeting, so.
Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one oh seven? Any public input on the resolution placing certain management employees on the newly adopted twenty twenty-four compensation plan? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Nay.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one oh eight, resolution approving insurance coverage for the city of Herman Town. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones, a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
Over the past year, the city has had, there's a living disorder, the city's insurance cost, um, we have an odd plan here. It starts in the middle of July and goes back to the middle of July again. So this is the renewal. Um, we have some increases because of some increase in payroll and increases with, um, the fire department, keeping on the fire department and some of the reevaluation of city-owned buildings. So that represents the, um, um, increased cost.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution approving insurance coverage for the city of Herman Town? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one oh eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one oh nine, resolution calling for a public hearing on a proposed tax abatement and the intent to issue general obligation bonds and approving the form of notice of public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
I'm taking some hours here tonight if he wants to explain, maybe you could do a combined explanation of, uh, this resolution and then the next one as well.
Yep. Thanks, John. Yep, I'll do a combination. Uh, talk about the pre-sale report too, a little bit that's in front of the council. Great. Um, thanks for having me again. I see you guys a lot. This is the B bond. This is the bigger B bond. Um, hey, thanks for, uh, those of you to, that attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. Um, thanks for step, stepping by, um, and saying hi at our booth. We appreciate that. Um, lots of, lots of folks we knew and, um, that was a fun time out there, down there in Rochester. It's a long, long ride for you guys, but thanks for attending. Appreciate that. So, um, we've got, um, a schedule on these, uh, the bonds, the B bonds, um, that we're following here that, uh, will finance the expansion of the Herman Town Hockey Arena, um, for the Herman Town School District. Um, this bond issue, uh, inter packets has a pre-sale report. There's two resolutions for you to consider. Um, it's seventeen point oh four oh million, um, out of a twenty-four million dollar, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar, uh, total. Uh, so the difference it looks like is the state grant of seven point four seven five million. So, um, lots going on in this bond issue, but we put it together into one, um, nineteen-year, uh, bond issue with a sales tax revenue portion to help pay for it. Um, at ten point eight four million was the authorized sales tax and then equipment, uh, portion and this tax abatement portion, uh, where that hearing's coming from on August fifth, um, that will fund the whole thing. So, um, that'll get us up to that twenty-four million dollar, uh, mark with, with the state, uh, bonding appropriation. So, um, we held a similar hearing the last time, um, for your park improvement. This is the same kind of, um, concept, uh, here. Uh, it's going to, uh, the tax abatement portion is going to finance, um, uh, what the, uh, sales tax, uh, won't cover as far as the building is concerned. And then we've got an equipment portion and that will take care of the equipment, uh, that the sales tax portion doesn't take care of. So, uh, a large bond issue with lots of moving parts. The, um, uh, hearing is also going to include what we call a, um, TFR hearing. It's, uh, because, uh, there's a five oh one C three, a tax, exempt five oh one C three, um, partner here, uh, in this, in this project. It's the Hockey Association. Um, cause there's certain contractual, um, obligations with those folks, um, sort of helping to operate it. Uh, that, uh, hearing will also include that. And it's kind of a non-event, but, uh, the feds say we have to do that when, when, um, when a school district or, uh, a city, a municipality isn't, uh, uh, operating that, kind of running it. So, so we'll, we'll do, it's kind of a two-for-one, uh, public hearing at that point. Um, again, the same, same, uh, year term, um, I'll feature all of that as the A-bond had on it. It's, um, not bank qualified, uh, which is fine. Typically, um, that will yield lower interest rates, but, uh, the non-bank qualified is still outperforming the bank-qualified, uh, interest rates. So it's a good time to, um, issue it this way. So, um, how smart we all are, right? Cause we all know the market. Uh, your rating was a double A last time. We talked about this with Standard and Poor's. Um, so we're seeing that is going to be a non-event as well. Um, so we got a discounted price, um, because this bond issue is coming up so quick after the A-bond. So, uh, we do what we can for Herman Town. Um, the method of sale is going to be the same. We're going to package this up. We're going to sell it in the public market, uh, like we did before. We'll come back with bids like we did, uh, just a little while ago with the A-bonds. Same concept there. Um, look at all your existing debt and nothing is, um, high enough interest rate wise to refinance. Just want to let you know about that. Um, there are opportunities to invest this bond issue, um, higher than the yield of the bonds, um, if it takes a while for the money to move along. So just be mindful that either elders can help you do that or, um, or you can invest, uh, the bond proceeds however you've done in the past too. So I think you've done it both ways. You've used us. Um, so Kevin can, Kevin and John can kind of figure out the best strategy for that. We're, um, absolutely, um, willing to kind of show you what we can do as well. Um, and then, um, Freiburger Buchanan here out of Duluth is your bond attorney still on this, uh, bond issue and they prepared the two resolutions for you. Um, one other thing is, um, because we're going out longer than uh, fifteen years on the abatement side, we are going to get a letter from the school district, uh, requesting to decline participation in the abatement. We've done that with the Wellness Center, uh, back then. Um, that's fine. It's just our abatement. We're not asking for abatement from a school district or a county or anything like that. So in order to get an extra few years above the fifteen, we'll just craft the letter, send it to those folks and they can sign it and, um, feel good about saying no, because that's what we want them to do. And that'll go out, um, sometime after the Fourth of July here. And I'll be back on August fifth, uh, maybe via, um, Zoom or something, uh, for the public hearing. I know those go pretty quick. Not too many comments on these types of public hearings. Um, we will sell bonds on August nineteenth. That's one of the other resolutions. It says that that's where we're going to come back and show you the bids on August nineteenth. And then we'll close this on September fifth. So you get all the money at that point. Um, yeah, and, um, the market's doing as well as it did before. No glitches since the last time I was here. So, um, but the bond issue is a good month away. So we'll keep tabs on that for you and I try to hit all the highlights and I'll yield for questions if you have any, but you've kind of heard a lot of this before.
Any questions from council?
I just had one quick question. When we, um, did the tax abatement before, have we canceled that yet for the Pickner project? Okay. Okay. So just the letter from school with this one was different. It's.
It's just a state law. Just we have to do that in order to get twenty years or so on it instead of fifteen. We have to ask them to decline. So.
Okay.
It's a, it's a good thing. They always ask why, but that's okay. It's more of an uphill battle when we want them to participate.
When you said we could do something with the money between the time we're going to get it at some point in September and construction starts and it could be six months. So.
Yeah.
Short-term CDs or something like?
Uh, we're better than that. So, yeah, yeah, we've got all sorts of choices. Um, but it is limited, chapter one eighteen A. You know, we can't go and, and just, you know, kind of roll the dice, right? So it is CDs and mar, uh, uh, market, um, market rate, stuff like that. Um, there's agencies, there's all sorts of other things that can kind of get you a little higher. Again, the CDs can, we can buy them from anywhere. So it's, you know, so, and then they're all like right under the FBI, FDIC insurance too. So two fifty here, two fifty, you know, you can just keep, keep going. So collateralization.
What can we do with the interest earned on that? Can we spend it on the project?
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Pay down the debt.
Or pay for the overruns. Right. Okay. But, uh, all right.
Yep. And so to, to, to invest higher than the yield on the bonds, um, which probably isn't hard to do now, right? Maybe the bonds would be three eight and maybe get five something, you know, on CD these days, depending how you ladder it.
Yep.
Um, we just have to, uh, make sure that, uh, because it's such a large bond issue, if it's under five million and neither of these were, it's called a two-year spend down. The feds have certain percentages that we have to follow to spend. And then if we hit those marks, then we can keep it all. If we don't hit some of those marks, then we just have to rebate, uh, over and above back to them. So it's, it's always good to just push it to the limit because it's money that, you know, we made over what we could anyway. It's not like they're taking anything away from many of the bond proceeds that we're financing here. So, yeah, it's a good exercise, I think, to, especially when you're talking big numbers like this.
Yep.
And then collateralization, I think I'm not investment advisor, but, um, we can, um, by, by, by investing more globally like that, we can kind of chop this up into, um, to, um, um, investments that don't need that, that type of extra collateral, which if you invest locally, that could bring the yield down, right? Cause, uh, banks got to finalize this collateral, right, to put up against it. So that kind of would bring the interest rate down a little bit for them. So that's good to talk to somebody when they're talking numbers like this. So. So, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No. We're good.
Great. Thanks.
Like to ask for any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one oh nine? Last opportunity for public comment on the resolution for the public hearing on tax abatement or the intent to issue general obligation bonds. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Hi. Next is a companion resolution, two thousand twenty-four dash one ten, resolution of the city of Herman Town, Minnesota, providing for the sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-four B. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Is that right?
Yeah.
My hearing's going. Um, Mr. Mulder, anything else need, that needs to be added?
This is just, again, um, providing for the sale of, of those bonds.
Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ten? Any public input on the resolution providing for the sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-four B? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution in front of the council? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eleven, resolution approving a special use permit for the construction of a two-family home in an R-three residential zoning district. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson handle this one? Eric, could you explain this to us?
Great. Thank you very much. Um, this is a property at five one, five four West Arrowhead Road. Uh, the entire property consists of two point three three acres. Um, this property was previously subdivided into a, what we call the parent lot and a flag lot. Um, that investor at the time has since sold this property to Sumas Construction for the purpose of, uh, building a twin home, which is before us this evening. Uh, what the applicant is proposing to do is reconfigure the lot lines associated with this. So instead of a flag lot and a half acre lot, we'll have a lot that bisects the middle of this proposed building. So as part of this, uh, there will be new public water and sewer extended for the second unit associated with this. Um, the one difference between a single-family home and a twin home is that there's much larger setbacks from a side yard setback standpoint. A single-family home requires only a ten-foot setback. In this case, for a twin home, it's a forty-foot, uh, side yard setback associated with this. So, uh, all told, both the other front and rear yard setbacks associated with this proposed structure, uh, meet or greatly exceed our minimum requirements.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
A quick question. Sorry, I wasn't able to make the planning and zoning, uh, meeting. Was there much public discussion on this issue?
Uh, the, uh, neighboring property owner? The neighboring property owner to the east did speak about this. They were in favor of the project. Once again, this gives them a much greater setback than they could have had with two single-family homes next to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I was just going to say, I mean, we've never voted one of these down, and it seems to take a bit of city's time because of how it's zoned. Why don't we just change the zoning so we don't have to have this happen every time we get one of these?
Because I think we want the neighborhood input. Because that opens up a public meeting.
We've never, we've never voted one down. I can't imagine. It's always been positive input from the neighbors.
There has been things voted down prior to your arrival.
Okay.
We previously, when we had flag lots, those used to require a planning and zoning hearing, and then a council action. And those, through the years, same thing, were very straightforward. And it was decided after about three years worth of that, that it would just be a P and Z action associated with it. The benefit of the special use permit is it require, basically, it allows two opportunities for public dispute, both at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well at City Council. So it gives an additional public input opportunity that I think is beneficial for these type of projects.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eleven? Any public input on the resolution allowing for the construction of a two-family home at fifty-one, fifty-four West Arrowhead Road? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twelve. Resolution approving final plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for the improvement, improvements to Benson Road, District number six zero one. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So on Benson Road, we're going to replace a number of culverts that had problems late last year. And then we're also going to extend the road that is on the, on the map, but we're going to extend the physical road as well, so those two improvements.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
And that road extension is on the property owner's cost?
Yes, that's correct.
They're paying, reimbursing the city for that?
Yes.
Anything else from council? Or any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one twelve? Any public input on the resolution for improvements to the Benson Road? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirteen. Resolution accepting a proposal for engineering services with a total not to exceed a contract amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety dollars for Highway fifty-three water main replacement between Cirrus Drive and Airport Road. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So this resolution is just approving the engineering work to be done following David's design of this. We'll be back here to authorize the advertisement for bid.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? And this is to take a three-inch water main that's had some problems and replace it with a five-inch water main?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Just questioning, would this construction work be done this year? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one thirteen? Any public input on the resolution accepting a proposal for engineering services to study a water line replacement on Highway fifty-three between Cirrus Drive and Airport Road? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one fourteen. Resolution directing preparation of preliminary engineering feasibility report for Highway fifty-three business park improvements and sanitary extension. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
So this is improvement to the business park at the corner of Highway fifty-three, Levick Bypass. We have kind of a preliminary estimate of what the infrastructure would cost. We're asking for a formal feasibility report as part of the assessment process. The landowner, we discussed with the landowner, the need for assessments. They've preliminary agreed to some assessments, and so we want to follow that legal process, and that's why we need the feasibility report first.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one fourteen? Any public input on the resolution directing the preparation of a preliminary engineering feasibility report? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one fourteen? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one fifteen. Resolution approving pay request number two for road improvement District number five forty-one and five forty-two to Northland Constructors in the amount of four hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So this is a payment for the work that's been done in the last month on Hermanton Road and the bridge at Five Corners.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one fifteen? Is there any public input on the resolution approving pay request number two for road improvement districts four, five forty-one and five forty-two? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one sixteen. Resolution approving change orders number four for the Pickner Park Improvement to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
So this is change order for Musco Lighting for a second mobilization. They had to mobilize for taking the lights down, putting them into storage, and then the second mobilization will then also be for coming back and then reinstalling those.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Probably there's no more change orders.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one sixteen? Last opportunity for public comment on the resolution approving change order number four for Fichtner Park Improvements. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seventeen. Resolution approving change orders number three for Fichtner Park Improvement to Casky Incorporated in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
So this change order is to make some improvements to the parking lot on the north side. Previously, we had approved a change order that we thought was covering this work, but it really was just to redo the large parking lot there that is currently in bad shape, and it's got some cracks and some grass going through it. This change order would improve the parking lot on the south end and put in curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? So this change order gives us one contiguous newly constructed or paved parking lot?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it'd be a tough look for a five-million-dollar project to have a piecemeal together parking lot.
Any other comments from council, questions? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seventeen? Any public input on resolution approving change order number three for Fichtner Park Improvements? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighteen. Resolution directing preparation of preliminary engineering feasibility report for Mary Lane Road Improvement and Sanitary Extension. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder?
So this is as a result of a petition for the people that live on Mary Lane, asking the city to look into the cost of improving the road and extending sanitary sewer. So if approved, the city engineer would prepare a engineering report. We would report that back to you. We would have an informational meeting with the neighbors, and then finally a public hearing before any decision would be made about going forward on the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Joe, anyone online yet? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighteen? Any public input on the resolution for a feasibility report for Mary Lane Road Improvements and Sanitary Extension? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is a motion to go into closed session, a motion to close the meeting of the Hermantown City Council pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B, to discuss the city administrator's performance evaluation. Following this closed session, the Hermantown City Council will reconvene in open session pursuant to the posted agenda for that date and time, and during such open sessions, summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation. Do we have a motion?
Move to close.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Take a little break before we.